All, 116 Wedbridge Street, Granbury, Texas. The Granbury City Council Regular Meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Fred Orkut with the coordinator of the Hood County Prayer Task Force to do our invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge led by our own councilperson, Patrice Reiner. All rise, please.
Pray with me, please. Our Father in Heaven, we praise and exalt Your holy name. We acknowledge that You are the giver of life and of all good things. You have been so good to us, especially in sending Jesus to die on the cross to pay for our sin. Lord, thank You. One of the good things You've done for us was to institute government at all levels of our society. We're here tonight to participate in the most local form of government, our Granbury City Council. Father, thank You for our mayor and for each of these council members. Thank You for those who serve You as employees of the city. Thank You for the volunteers. They're all a blessing from You, Lord. Father, endow Mayor Hewlett and each of these council people with Your wisdom, with Your courage, and with Your integrity so that their actions will redound to Your glory and the welfare of our citizens. Father, we lift up Brother Chris to You tonight and his wife and the death of his mother-in-law, Sally Givens. Lord, I pray that You'd comfort the whole family, every single one of them. Lord, we know that she's with You, and we thank You for it. Thank You, Father. We ask all this, trusting in our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And to the Texas flag. Our honor's Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the state of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
It's good to see so many people out with all the threat of the bad weather coming this way, but I think we'll be in good shape here. We'll start the meeting off with the citizens' comments on matters that are not on the agenda. The speakers have a time limit of three minutes for a combined total of 30 minutes allotted this time on comments regarding matters not listed on the agenda. The city council will be allowed to receive input or information for future agenda items, but will not be allowed to enter into any discussion. I didn't see any people signed up, did they, Carla? That said, does anybody in the audience wish to speak? Hearing none, we'll move down to the public comments on agenda items. These are for the non-public hearing agenda items. Speakers have a time limit of three minutes. Once again, allotted by this time for comments regarding agenda items that are not listed as a public hearing. Public hearing comments will be recognized when the public hearing is open. So at this time, does anybody in the public wish to speak on any of the items? Hearing none, we'll close the public comments. Next, we'll move into our consent agenda. The consent agenda, we have the first item being considered approving the city council meeting minutes of January 21st, the second one being considered the Granbury Housing Authority request or wavering the 2020 payment in lieu of taxes, and the third one being considered adopting ordinance number 2003 amending the operation budget for the general and utility fund for the fiscal year 2019-2020. This is for some parks items and some, I think we're going to purchase some trees also there. Also, number four is consider and accept the abandonment of the portion of the 15-foot sanitary sewer easement granted for the city of Granbury recorded in volume 242, page 500, D.R.H.C.T. The property is described in the Harbor Lake section. And number five is to consider adopting a resolution of general support for the filing application that wishes to file for the housing tax credit within the city of Granbury, resolution number 2002, general support for the proposed new construction of the proposed housing tax credit development to be located on Meander Road south of North Fork Court, Granbury, Texas. Council, you had an opportunity to look over these consent agenda items and read the resolution. Are there any of those items that you wish to make changes to or at this time possibly pull off the consent agenda and put to deliberation agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said consent agenda.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Tony Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corrigan. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move into the deliberation agenda. The first item being to receive an update from Hibson, Todd, and Chris, you got a report from staff?
As you're aware, we've been working closely on this situation from our last meeting. I attached an email communication, kind of gave you a glimmer of hope, and then I've asked Mr. Kendall to give us some updates on some conversations he's had with Water Development Board staff and executive team since that time. Maybe you can give us some information.
Yes, sir. Be glad to. You may recall the last time since our meeting on January 21st, I really didn't think that there's three items that need to be done before they can release the funds. One is the approval of the plans and specifications. Secondly is the approval of the C-MAR contract, and third is the approval of the bid packages that have all been released relating to this project. Since we've met the 21st, we've received the approval letter for the plans and specs. So that's the first domino down. We received a letter on January the 24th on the C-MAR contract comments. Within it, we have already replied back to that as of today. So if we receive that approval, that'll be that second domino that falls. We received comments on six bid packages on January the 27th. We have already responded back to those. If those six big packages get approved, then one of them aboard should be able to release about 2.1 million of the 2.5 million or so pay estimate that is currently in one of them aboard. We did also receive comments on six additional bid packages. We will be ready to respond to that, hopefully, I think, by the end of this week or early next week. And to give you where we're at on that, we submitted 25 bid packages, so there's 12 now that we've received comments on or for about 48 percent. Bottom line to get where we're at is I would think by the end of February that we would have all the bid packages comments received, and if not approved, then all the responses back in by the end of the month. I do see in talking with Mr. Kaufman that it's probably worthwhile in going forward of anticipating getting the contractor made whole with his first pay estimate and then the city reimbursing themselves with that 2.1 million and going forward with what's already been approved of the bid packages or should be shortly. We're continuing to be proactive. Certainly, there's been discussions with Chairman Lake of saying this is all hands on deck, and we have seen that through Executive Administrator Jeff Walker, but he's also assigned Deputy Executive Administrator Jessica Suba, and she is working directly with the teams and the resources, providing timelines and comments back. We have exchanged emails or phone calls nearly every day of what is the priority for this, when is the timeline for this. So they are definitely on it. It's moving in the right direction, obviously not as fast as we would like, but I can see light at the end of the tunnel and I'm not seeing a train at this point. So with that, it's a little more positive. We are moving in the right direction, and certainly it's got their attention. Without a doubt, there are a lot of resources being drawn into this in working both with Jessica and Clay Schultz at the one of them aboard. They are on this, and they've also done some reassignments of staff to continue to move things along on the water treatment plant in addition to the wastewater treatment plant as well, because that's something we continue to need to move forward. We, in fact, are meeting with them on Thursday of this week to be proactive of going, here's all the C-MAR procurement documentation that we're going to go out for all the bid packages. Let's get these reviews done early so that the only thing you're reviewing by the end of the day is the actual completed agreements and the bids that come in with it. But everything else, you don't have to review, so we can cut this review time down considerably in going forward. And we continue to, quite frankly, to meet with them every week. I'm heading down to Austin tomorrow and have done so nearly every week within the past two months or so, and we'll continue to do that until we get this resolved. That's as short and sweet as I can put it. There's probably been about 100 megadata that's gone between my office and Austin this last week or so. We'll continue to reply back and respond as quickly as possible as we can.
Thank you, thank you. Council, I did too. I also talked to the Chairman Lake, and he pretty much confirmed exactly what Mr. Kendall was saying, that he says like a five alarm fire, all hands on deck, they're going to take care of this as quick as they can. You know, and I know it's not moving as fast as we want it to move, but you know, meeting with them every week, calling them every week, whatever we need to do, because they're committed to it. They watched it on live stream, they've seen our frustration, and they know exactly where we're coming from, and they're ready to do something about it, so we're going to hold them to that.
They are. I definitely have seen that with Jessica's hands-on involvement. Some of the comments we initially got back, I was ready to throw up my hands. I've pushed back on some of those, and they have, to her credit, have gone back and go, you're absolutely right, ignore this, this, and this, and move on. So we're all working together proactively on this, and they're listening, and it's not just my way or the highway. So we're trying to get our way through this as quickly as we can on both sides. They're working that way, too.
Thank you. Council, any more questions for Keith on this thing?
Well, my recommendation is to, it was written out in your memo, to authorize the city manager to issue payment to the C-MAR and then protect Hibson, Todd in accordance with the draw request related to the water treatment plant project that have been submitted to the Water Development Board for the release of funds. That is, if they're still being withheld after February 14th and in the amount not to exceed $3 million as an interim funding source to be reimbursed by the Water Development Board funds upon their release. So it kind of gives us some interim financing, a gasp of air, really. We do not have the money to fund this entire project, or we wouldn't have borrowed the money in the first place. So we're taking unrestricted reserve funds and investing on temporarily in this project to be reimbursed if you will allow us to do that.
And I apologize, Chris, I got so excited about going forward with this thing, because we do need to go ahead and have this planned where we can do something right now, and so that's what we're going to do. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to issue payment in accordance with the current draw request to the Texas Water Development Board utilizing the city's unrestricted reserve funds with those conditions.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Mobley. And a second by Councilman Rodriguez. Council, any more discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Hopefully, it won't be very, very long.
Well, I think I can speak on Pepper Lawson's behalf. Thank you very much. We appreciate y'all taking those actions, and I know I can speak on my bankers' behalf. Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate it.
We like to pay our bills, okay?
It doesn't have anything to do with the city. It's just been unfortunate that it got to this point, and you just don't turn a ship this large around that quickly, but we're getting there with y'all's help.
This was a lot less painful than last time.
Yeah, a little lot different.
Thank you, Keith.
Thank you, Don.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Our next item is a public hearing considered in ordinance number 2004, and I think we're going to talk about seven, eight, and nine because we got a rezoning and a SUP that's all tied in. Chris, you got a staff report on that?
You bet. Y'all have had an opportunity to see your packet, and you know, I've been in and out so much because of the family situation. I would just like to thank staff for putting things together and making it happen and having the P&amp;Z meeting and having this on the agenda, and everything just kind of falls in place. So I'll turn it over to Scott on these three items and let him give you a brief report on all those.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Council, Mr. Mayor. What we have are three separate agenda items, three separate actions. The first of which is a comprehensive plan amendment to amend the future land use map. The second is a rezoning request to allow for the property to be rezoned to multifamily. And lastly, we have an SUP request to allow for an RV park. The purpose is to allow for the expansion or to accommodate the expansion of the Bennett's RV park. Currently, its grandfather not conforming. You can see the area that's bounded in teal. It's split zoned. The front portion of that in red is heavy commercial. The back portion of that was annexed and zone interim holding. Our zoning ordinance requires multifamily as a base district, then an SUP with a site plan to show how the RV park's going to be laid out. In essence, it's considered high-density residential, so that's why it's classified as multifamily as a base district. Here is the plat of the property showing it as a legal lot of record as a part of the recorded plat. This is our comprehensive plan, future land use map, showing the area in its entirety as heavy commercial. Again, what they're proposing on the first gen item is to move that from heavy commercial to high-density residential to accommodate a zoning request. This is the commission test in order to look at comprehensive plan changes. Again, similarly, this is what they used to support the comprehensive plan change. Again, their grandfather not conforming. They have a little bit of area in between the north part along Old Granbury Road and the southern part where their parking and offices are, their sales lot, to accommodate the expansion. This is our matrix in the zoning ordinance that shows SUP and multifamily as a requirement with a supplemental standard of the site plan. The site plan being presented by the applicant, that area that's kind of bordered in between, sandwiched in between as yellow is their expanded facility. And going back to their aerial, you can kind of see the layout from a bird's eye view of how they have their RV park laid out. Again, that area in yellow showing the area of expansion, focus of concentration. I will say as a side note, as a part of site planning this, they did go through a ZVA hearing in order to save the mature trees. So the expansion of a nonconformity requires compliance with our landscaping ordinance. They have so many nice mature trees in this area that they're expanding to that they wanted to save those and integrate them into the park. They went to the ZVA, got some relaxation over the requirement of the new plantings in order to save the mature trees there on site and kind of integrate it into their site design. Seven notices were mailed out to property owners within 200 feet. As of this meeting tonight, we have seen zero letters in favor or in opposition to. Again, this is kind of a three-application procedure. The first is to amend the comprehensive plan, the future land use map within the comprehensive plan to change it from commercial to high-density residential. If that goes forward and is accepted by council, then the zoning case can be considered to allow for the accommodation of the multifamily base district to consider the SUP. I do want to mention one other thing as a part of their application. They did mention that there will be no expanded access onto and off of 377. That was tied to their application, so it seems prudent to me on item, the third item here, that you can roll that condition as being presented by the applicant as a condition to the SUP. No public expansion of access onto 377. They themselves mentioned that all the access for the RV park will be utilized off of Old Granbury Road. So if there's going to be an alteration in what P&amp;Z voted on, staff is recommending adding that condition on the third item if council seeks to vote favorably on it. So your Planning and Zoning Commission report, by a vote of five a's and zero nays, they recommended approval of all three. They did not add the condition on the third one, so you'll need a three-quarter vote in order to add that condition on the SUP. Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager, I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing right now, and so we'll get to the questions after that. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on item number seven, eight, or nine? You wish to speak or just answer questions?
I'm just here to answer questions.
Okay. So do we have anybody in the audience who wishes to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council?
J.C.'s asking a question. It's going to go from 44 spaces to 73 spaces.
Okay, who's that?
J.C.
What was the question, J.C.?
I just asked how many spaces it is. She said 44 to 73.
And the applicant at the podium is Ms. Stacy Rist, who's representing the application tonight for Bennett's RV.
Hearing no more public hearings here, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any question for the applicant or the staff at this time?
Mayor.
Councilman Rodriguez.
Scott, so like the access for 377, if they decide in the future that they want to make that a grand entrance, can they come back and apply for that?
So that's a good question, and I think that's what putting the condition on the SUP does, is that it doesn't expand the usage of the 377 access other than what's being currently used. And so the expansion of the RV park, those additional spaces will utilize Old Granbury Road. That condition can always be, if they want to expand it, they will have to come back in order to address that on the SUP, and that's the good thing about tying it as a condition to the SUP.
Council, any more questions, concerns on this item to the applicant or the staff?
Here.
Councilman Reiner?
I just want to bring something up because I think part of our job is looking to the future. I like the idea of expanding the RV portion of it, and I know that we have a lot of visitors in town, and this is a good way for them to check out the town. I'm concerned about changing the overall land use to high-density residential on 377 for future. If Bennett's ever decides to sell in the future, we're looking at the potential for somebody to develop that out as apartments, duplexes, whatnot, and then we have the potential for safety issues. I'm happy about the less access or no access currently to 377 because I, high-density and 377 don't mix right now. But in the future, I just have to throw that out there as a concern. If we're changing the landscape 377 where most everything along that corridor is commercial in the future, do we really want, I'm not saying that Bennett's is ever going to sell. They may or may not, but I have to look to the future and think, what's that going to look like in the future if we have kids in apartment complexes on the 377 corridor? Safety, I'm sure you all know, is my number one concern for pretty much everything.
Chris, you want to answer that or Scott?
Scott, is there a way to achieve the outcome of this any other way than rezoning it?
That is my question.
The zoning ordinance requires the provision of the base multifamily district, and we all saw the matrix there showing the SUP only in multifamily. The other little nuance here is multifamily provides the base district for apartments, but also has a site plan provision. So if somebody wants to, say in the event hypothetically they sell, they come in for a proposed apartment under a current ordinance, they would have to present a site plan, circle back around and show how the site's going to work with a site plan. Now, site plans are a little less discretionary than rezoning the property from commercial to multifamily because it's more ministerials, you know, you have that checklist, but it does give you the latitude to address site design things.
So just because something's zoned for it doesn't mean we have to allow it if we have other issues.
If they, so if they come in with a
Safety issues or something like that.
Right. So if there's other safety issues where they clearly don't meet the ordinance, then the city can hold them up.
Traffic impact analysis could be done on that intersection, and we could ensure that there was safety there, and that probably wouldn't fly to really subdivision tie on right there.
Mayor.
So the other good thing about this SUP is you're kind of tying that SUP to the property and the non-expansion of the access point. So if somebody came in, we can use the SUP with a condition imposed to say, you're expanding that access point on the 377 with this change in use.
We don't have to allow that, yeah?
Yeah.
Good questions.
Yeah.
Yep, and Rodriguez, you had a question down there?
Scott, do you know of other cities that are doing, having a zoning classification just for RVs?
There are some out there for RV and mobile home parks. Sometimes they're lumped together, but since I've been here, the way this ordinance is fashioned, it lumps them in with high-density residential, and that may be something we can look at in the future is setting up a separate, like we have for Hood Code and mobile home parks, just setting up a separate district and separate design standards for RV parks.
Mayor, if we can have the staff look into that, maybe investigate a zoning just for RV, maybe help us in the future if we have other people that are trying to come in with RV parks in city property. We might have that.
Mr. Mayor.
Captain Mobley.
Hey, I'm glad you're here because last night we had a meeting for the master plan for the parks, and one of the issues was RV space in this town. We don't have enough, and that's one of the desires, that's one of the checklists, and as we're looking at that list, we're, as a council, I'm looking and saying, what do we have already on our to-do list and what is already in the works? And it's nice to know that we can check that box now, so I'm glad you're here.
Yes, there is a very strong demand for it. We are turning people away every day.
I know our city manager's been trying to build one since he came here. I don't know if you
There are a lot of work. He wouldn't be interested.
I know. There's a lot of need for it, though.
Okay, Council, any more questions for the applicant or Scott, the staff? So now, Council, you got the two options, to amend or deny, or the, we're going to vote on these separately. Go ahead and do these separately. Ma'am, if you want, you can go ahead and sit down if you
Thank you.
So the first one being to consider adopting ordinance to approve the request to amend the future land use. You got option one or option two? Mr. Mobley? You can have a motion to amend the future land use plan with the 2016 comprehensive plan, or you can deny the applicant's request to amend the future land use plan. Staff went with the amend.
That's my motion.
I'll second that.
So we had the motion to amend by
Whatever the motion is.
Councilman Mobley. Don't do that. And we have a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion? You can do that later. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Next, we're going to item number eight, which is the public hearing considered adopting ordinance number 2005 for the rezoning. Council, got any more comments on this? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said rezoning as presented.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Rodriguez.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corrigan. Council, any more discussion on the rezoning? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Moving down to item number nine is a public hearing considered adopting ordinance number 2006, which is for the SUP. Council, do you have any questions or comments concerning the SUP?
I would like to add that we should really consider putting that restriction on the 377 as a condition
So we can put that with the motion, though, right?
I'd like to make that motion and tie in the access to 377.
So we have a motion to approve the said SUP with the access restriction for the 377.
Second.
And we have a second by Councilman Reiner. Council, any more discussion on that item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Once again, thank you for being here tonight. Item number 10 is a public hearing considering the following requests of the ranches at De Cordova. And I think we've got an FIA and a final plat. Chris, do you have a staff report on that one?
Scott's, I'll turn it over to you, sir.
Thank you, Council, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager. What we have is another phase rolling out at the ranches of De Cordova. This is, I believe, 5B. It's in the final plat stage. There are no variances associated with this. The construction cost for this next phase going online is a little over a half a million dollars. The developer, Mr. Phil Hope, has chosen to submit a payment performance bond at 120 percent of the cost. The engineer of record is Mr. Tyler Scott with the firm Barrett Hampton &amp; Brown has the engineer of record. This particular development is in Amud jurisdiction. To give you a little idea of where it is, it's just off Davis Road and Raya Road, kind of on the south side of the city. It's in Amud's jurisdiction. So the FIA has our updated FIA agreement with a three-party contract, Amud, it's a signatory on there, and if you see, the Amud's already executed it. We have Richard English's signature on it. Everybody signed it, with the exception of the city. You can see the plat history on this. The preliminary plat was approved in 2005, and they've been slowly rolling phases out since that time. The area that's being phased in is The area that's being phased in is that area that's circled in red, which is 5B. Everything to the north and to the west of this particular site has been built. These are the variances that were processed as a part of the original preliminary plat in 2005. Again, there are no variances associated with this plat application. The electric provider is United, and again, water and sewer is provided by Amud. Public notices, none were required by state law. The planning and voting, the planning and zoning commission recommended by a vote of 5A, zero nays to approve it as submitted by the applicant, and Mayor, council, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I open up to the public. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this FIA or the final plat? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any question for staff on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to execute the said FIA.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Corgan?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That FIA is approved. Next is our final plat. Council, do you have any discussion on the final plat? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said final plat.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Rodriguez. Council, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Moving down to item number three, which is a public hearing considering adopting ordinance number 2007. I'll just go ahead and call upon Scott Sobchek if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor, council, Mr. Manager. This is a property that we've seen approximately three years ago. It's a re-up of an S U P for an unhosted bed and breakfast. We did some research with PD and Code, and there's no outstanding issues that have been reported over the operation of the B and B. It's in a single-family residential zone. It fronts Bridge Street. It's got a primary structure with a, with a cottage. You may notice a handwritten note that's part of the staff report or an attachment to the application saying that they're going to switch as two guest suites unhosed between offering one guest suite in the main house and one in the cottage, or a combination of two in the main house, not to exceed two. They know that there's a cap there as it's unhosed. S U Ps are required in single-family residential by zoning ordinance. We have a long list of supplemental standards that they have to meet. Again, they've been inspected in the past, and they have the parking and the smoke detectors from previous inspections. They've submitted the site plan showing the layout of the parking and where the cottage is. Fifteen notices were sent out to owners within 200 feet. Three, three have returned as of tonight's meeting, all in favor and support. As the previous one was issued for a three-year, now we're up to a five-year consideration based on council's discretion. The P and Z voted by a recommendation of 5A, zero nays to approve the S U P for a term of five years expiring at 2025, and only two bedrooms will be used for overnight gas per the zoning ordinance requirements. Be happy to entertain your questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I open up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on item number 11? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any concerns or questions for the staff? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said S U P with the said conditions.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Reiner?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corgan? Council, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Item number 12 is a public hearing considering adopting ordinance number 2008, approving a request of Vista Properties. We'll call upon Scott Sobchek to give us a staff report again on this.
Mayor, council, Mr. Manager, this is the out parcel that's located just to the west of US 37, Luton Ranch, the westernmost phase to the west of the Taco Casa on that available pad site. So, what's being proposed here is an auto, auto-service facility, which would include minor auto repair, i.e. fluid changes. In essence, this is a whole change facility place. Proposed use is commensurate with the zoning currently in place. It's light commercial, so this type of facility would accommodate a auto service station facility. It's a planted lot of record. It was annexed into the city in 98 and zoned to light commercial in 2010 with that particular phase of Luton Ranch. Little bit about their model, their business model, they're kind of a unique auto-change facility. What they have is kind of a drive-through. So, the, the customer and the representative, Keith, is, is here for take five. He can go into a little more detail, but the, the customer stays in the car, gets to enjoy the, the radio and the air conditioning, and they pop the hood and crawl under the car and change your oil while you're in the car. So, there is kind of limited seating area, and they have you out within, within a quick time supposedly. One thing that we looked at during site plan review to go over to the site plan is that they originally had the facility positioned fronting 377 with the roll-up bay doors, and what we asked the staff was to actually turn it 90 degrees and have the bay doors facing Taco Casa and have the solid, more architecturally present portion of the structure facing 377. They were able to do that and accommodate the delineated fire lanes that are also shown on the planted lot as well. So, they did a good job of working with staff and working with our DRC to that end. They also show the sidewalk and meeting the landscaping requirements. As a part of our zoning ordinance, we have, have this list of supplemental standards for auto-change facilities or auto-service facilities regarding site plans, the storage of petrochem products being prohibited, vehicles being worked on, can't be left out there. Again, it's minor auto repair. They can't leave vehicles in a state of disrepair outside overnight or not during business hours. So, all those conditions are rolled over into the S U P. Eight notices were sent out to owners within 200 feet. None have been returned in favor or in opposition to. Your planning and zoning commission recommended by a vote of 5A, zero nays to approve it as submitted by the applicant. And again, Keith with take five is in the audience representing the application, Keith Mohammed.
Scott, I got a question on the number four there. All vehicles being stored for repairs shall be screened. Is that already put in place, or?
There's no screening on the site, so if they have any vehicles, they would have to enclose them in the facility and roll down the doors.
I mean, I wouldn't anticipate it being, being a fast oil change place.
Right. So, it's just a stipulation in our supplemental requirements. We included everything. We made them aware that no vehicles in a state of disrepair could be left outside, and so what that, what that means from a planning standpoint is if they have something that stays there, they have to keep it inside the building overnight and close the doors.
Are they close enough to have a taco delivered to the car while they're waiting? Might be able to do something there. I think Chris had a question, too, didn't you, Chris?
No, I don't see any elevation. I'm just going to, you know, the proverbial elephant in the room question is, what is this building going to look like?
Yeah. Question?
Good evening, city council members and mayor. I didn't bring my flash drive to load it in, but I do have two copies of elevations if you don't mind.
Thank you.
And this is what's been reviewed in the city.
Oh, I've seen them before.
It's going to blend in with the neighborhood. That's what my concern is.
Correct.
I've seen these before in that particular.
Yeah, we're, we're not going to do anything that stands out and-
Where do your employees park?
So, generally, the facility generally has three to five employees, and usually it's three to four parking spots, and we usually park behind the building.
On that landscape area?
So, they have parking, if you can see, to the north of the turnaround area?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's ample parking there that's still on the property.
That's on their property?
Yeah.
Was that already built out? Or do we open up the hearing? Do we, can we ask questions here?
Well, you can right now because I haven't opened up the public hearing yet, but if you got a question for the owner or the staff, go ahead.
I'm just, my concern is, as they exit that building, they're right on that, that entrance, isn't it? Scott?
Not sure what the distance is, but there's, there's a certain amount of green space between the right-of-way and I, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to guess at what that distance is.
They're going to meet fire code and everything as far as going through there, right?
They're, they're tying, I can say that that loop around is tying into the fire lane that's shown on the plat that was, should have been vetted during the preliminary plat review and the dedication of the fire lanes.
So, the bay doors are actually facing not towards 377, they're, yeah?
Yeah, and that's my concern is that they come out of, out of the take five going towards Taco Casa, but you have all that traffic that comes in and out.
So, the Taco Casa, if you look at the site plan, the Taco Casa will be turning before, in essence, where that fire lane is, those drives match. So, they'll be making a right turn into Taco Casa, and as they exit out of the bay doors, that's further north of where they're turning into Taco Casa.
You can kind of see on here, Eddie, where that-
That first one?
Yeah. See that driveway that's already been developed there?
So, here's where the two drives, Taco Casa goes this way, the drive-in, and they'll be exiting far north of where the Taco Casa is.
Yeah.
Did y'all get to see this?
This is a, I'm going to go ahead and open a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, you got any more questions for the staff or the applicant here at this time? Hearing none, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for bringing the notice.
No problem.
So, council, if there's no more questions on this, I'll entertain a motion to, to approve the said S U P with the said conditions.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Corgan?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley? Hang on a second. Got any more discussion? Mr. Mobley?
The south elevation is the one facing 377, has the door on it. Is that correct?
Advocate?
So, Scott.
The south elevation would be the, the part facing 377. That's not the part with the windows, it's the part with the door. The windows would face the, where the stores behind it. Is that true?
Yeah, so the way they have this, the way they have this configured is, yeah, the windows are facing toward the internal portion of the, of the retail plaza, and this would be on 377.
Can you flip it around the other way?
Can you?
Where the nicer side faces 377?
Or, or, they're looking for some windows.
It's just flipping your layout.
And a sidewalk.
Is that a, is that a bay door, or is it just a door?
It's a pedestrian door, sorry.
It's a steel door.
All it is, it's a pedestrian door.
Okay.
For emergency?
Yes, sir. To meet fire requirements. But just, just a reminder to council members that it's a stay-in-your-car oil change, so very rare do we ever have anybody come out of the car.
That's what we're getting at, is the aesthetics of it. As it, as you're driving down Highway 377, you're going to see what typically would be a side door.
Right.
Aesthetically, it's not very pleasing. No architectural features there other than a door. A Wayne's Coat.
And, and the signage, and the oil change signage is on the north elevation facing unit stores.
Yeah.
And-
Facing marshals.
And I would think you'd want something on 3, facing 377.
Oh, besides the door, yeah?
Besides the door. So, as far as the signage, we could put a signage, but usually the marquee sign serves as the signage for the building. Most of your signage you're seeing is, as you drive into the, the facility.
But is there, is there, excuse me, can I?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is there a, a problem with you flipping out the layover to where, whatever is on the other end would be at that end, and the exit for the emergency would be on the north?
Towards the, yeah.
So, generally, the way we want the building to be oriented is, is that little bump out that you see, that's where the office is, the customer office?
That's the bump out?
Yeah. So, that little bump out that you see on the building, it, that's the customer, that's a manager's office, so as a car's exit, that's where a lot of the transactions are done. So, and, and all our facilities that we build, that's generally the layout of how we, we have.
So, do they come, do they come inside the building to pay, or do they?
No, everything's done with them inside the car.
Okay.
So, they're presented with a, they're, they're presented with like a placard of the services they want to get. The services are completed, and they pay while every, you know, they're sitting in the car. Well, so, on that side, we were talking about the pedestrian door, that pedestrian door is where the equipment room is, with, there's recycled tanks in there, so you don't want to see a window there. The, the room behind it, next to it is the bathroom, and the room in front of it is the, the manager's office.
What, what can you propose to make it look better?
So, when you're looking at it, you're, you're taking about, so, are y'all looking at the elevations right now?
Yes.
So, you're looking at the take? Yes, so.
Facing 377.
I get, we could put more signage, or, you know, the drive-through oil change on the top, and then we could, we could change the color of the door so it blends into the building. I'm open to any suggestions that you may have, but as far as the layout of the building, this is generally how we have it.
What about some architectural features? What'd you say? An awning or an overhang?
Absolutely. They show a light over it, but we could put an awning over it. We've done it, we've done it in past projects that we've put an awning over it.
Something needs to dress it up. I mean, it is our front door.
Well, it's actually more of a egress door just for fire, you know, fire hazard.
No, I mean, it's our front.
Oh, absolutely. I fully understand.
Coming into our town, you're going to see that.
Yeah, I understand.
Leaving the town.
Yeah, we want them to stop and do business with you, so.
You said that's an office, right? Typically, an office?
Well, the very front, so that bump out that you see?
Right.
When, that bump out there, that's the office. So, where that door is, is where the equipment room is.
Okay.
So, you don't want to put a window or anything there. You don't want to see them. You, you have the recycled oil tanks in that room.
So, you, yeah. You couldn't put a, a silhouette of a window to the right of it or to the left of it?
Both.
Or both?
It doesn't have to be a window, it could be a faux window.
Yeah, black it out. Or, you know, do, not frosty, but shaded?
Frame it, frame it in masonry or-
Absolutely. Consider it done. I have no issues with doing that.
And then it probably wouldn't cost any difference to put the electric panel on the west elevation, like by where the drainpipe, the gutter is, to see the roof gutter?
Yes, sir.
Just a suggestion.
Okay.
Scott, how would you recommend putting all this in a motion?
Roll, roll into the conversation, yeah.
I feel like I need to wait right now.
We just want to make, make it look good coming from 377.
Right, so, in, in these type of situations, if I may borrow one of those elevations?
Sure.
And what I'll do is I'll draw in one of those, thank you, draw in a faux window and have them initial it?
One on each side of the door.
One on each side of the door?
Uh-huh. And move the electric panel to the west side.
You want, you want Bruce to draw it up for you? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Put on, put no lights on there. Good catch, here.
So what we can do is, uh, recommend approval of the SUP with the following four, as being offered by P&amp;Z, and add the fifth one, uh, saying that the site plan, uh, as acknowledged by the applicant, item five, with the faux window addition, um, be added. And, and we'll just work with the city secretary to put that in the adoption ordinance.
We moved to the west side of the building, instead of right there on.
So we've got the most.
Electric box moved to the west side.
So we have the motion with the said conditions, and we're gonna add a condition to that, right?
Yeah. That the submitted site plan with the modifications?
Okay.
Be added to the adoption ordinance.
Who made the motion?
I did.
Greg.
Greg, Greg, you okay with that, adding that?
Absolutely.
Okay.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So we have a, so we have a motion with the said conditions, adding the other condition to, uh, to, to fix up the, uh, the part facing 377 there. Council, any more comments? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay?
Nay.
Okay. That is approved. Excuse me. Item number 13, is a public hearing considered adopting ordinance number 2009 approving the request of Daniel and Bridget Pyatt for an SUP? Scott, I'm gonna call on you to give us a staff report on that one, too.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a SUP in a single-family residential zone, uh, R8.4. It's the first, um, application on this property that we've seen since I've been here. Uh, this property is located between Bridge Street and Pearl Street, just off of, just to the east of Stockton. It's proposed as being one guest suite, unhosted. Again, uh, our zoning ordinance requires an SUP in single-family residential. Go back to the zoning map, you can see it's kind of sandwiched in between kind of the Langdon Center property, which is to the west. Um, we have the apartment complex to the south, and then single-family residential that's established more along Bridge Street. This is the site plan, uh, that was presented by the applicant. We have a minimum of two parking spaces required, and you can see along the bottom portion of that, they can get one over to the, to the west of the property, and then one further along the end. Um, 12 notices were sent within, uh, for property owners within 200 feet. One has been returned in favor. We also advertised in the Hood County News, uh, P&amp;Z voted 5A, 0 nays to support the SUP as presented by the applicant for a one-year term. And again, same stipulations, second being, only two bedrooms will be used for overnight guests per the zoning ordinance requirements. Be happy to entertain any questions?
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll turn it over to the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll, uh, close the public hearing. Council, do you have any question or concerns to staff on this item? Do it. Scott, can you roll back to the picture?
That photo?
Of the photo, yeah.
Explain that to us.
Wow.
Where is it?
It's right across from the Small Business Administration that is done by, I think, um, right there by the Hispanic place.
I mean, where, where's the house?
Oh, it's behind that.
I'm sort of looking at.
It's behind that trailer.
Yeah, it's set, deep into the property. So this is a shot, let me get to the site plan.
Driveway.
Yeah, you can see the long driveway back to the structure, and so that's a look.
They gotta construct a driveway.
So.
It's already constructed.
What's this stub out here for, right here in front? Is there gonna be another building?
No, that's a city access.
Not a current picture.
Go, go ahead and introduce yourselves, so that we get it on record.
Hi, I'm Bridget Pyatt, and this is my property.
Okay.
Uh, this is not a current picture. Um, I, we didn't submit pictures, so I'm not sure where this came from. That's our contractor's truck and trailer that was there many months ago. So there is a, there is a driveway there right now.
So my staff goes out there a month in, in advance when we start advertising this and work with them. Uh, so the driveway, as reported by my planner, was under construction.
Yeah, there's about a 75-foot driveway there right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council, any more questions for staff or the applicant? Well, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said SUP with the said conditions.
So moved.
I have that motion from Councilman Corrigan?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Wadley. Council, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? That is approved. Our next item is a public hearing, consider adopting ordinance number 2010, approving the request of Kelly Clark for an SUP.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, uh.
Yeah.
This is the Bulls on the Beach SUP event that we see every year. Um, this is classified as an outdoor entertainment temporary amusement center by our ordinance. Um, this, I don't know how long Kelly Clark has been operating this, but, uh, as with every year, we circle back with code enforcement and, uh, the police, and as with previous years, there's been no reported incident, uh, that was, uh, acknowledged to be rolled into these deliberations. Zoning's like commercial, it's in place. Uh, he's had this event granted 2016, 17, 18, and 19. Uh, our zoning ordinance requirements have some supplemental standards, uh, which we see every, every year. Uh, because it's an outdoor entertainment venue, and there's possibly the usage of PA systems, these supplemental standards kind of go on the air on the side of protecting adjacency for single-family residential. And, uh, so you have, like, for example, 34 and 35 may not be located within 300 feet of property zone for residential use. Uh, the burden falls on the applicant to go solicit input and get their feedback and approval or acknowledgement that they're there. If they don't, then it requires a three-quarter vote. So every year, um, they don't solicit the input, and I'll circle back to kind of where they, the zoning map. So you can kind of see, there's a 200-foot radius. Those properties along Pearl Street are commercial. The ones fronting Bridge Street toward the back, and it just touches on those residential properties going from 200 to three foot, 300 are residential. So you have that commercial buffer along, along Pearl Street, uh, in essence. Uh, so the owner does not go out and solicit input for 300 feet away from the property along those residential properties along Bridge Street, so it does require a three-quarter vote. Notice was published in Hood County News, according to the zoning ordinance and state law requirements, we mailed out eight notices to property owners within 200 feet. We have received zero letters in opposition or support. The other little nuance with this particular, uh, application is, our code of ordinance has a prohibition on animals on the beach, and that's a separate code outstanding from the zoning code. So one of, and this highlighted in yellow here, one of the provisions of that code is that it's an affirmative defense to prosecution under a se- section if the person brings or keeps an animal or pet on the property in conjunction with an event that's been previously approved by city council. So it's not a separate action, we just present the information that it's an acknowledgement that your approval, if you act in the affirmative, is that approval of the event that provides a defense to this section of the code. So again, no separate action, other than approving the SUP, uh, if you, if you choose to.
So the animals on the beach are tied with the SUP?
That's right. The, the clearance of this section of the code of ordinance is tied to the SUP. So Planning and Zoning Commission deliberated on, by a vote of 5A, 0 nays, P&amp;Z recommended approval of the SUP for the outdoor amusement center, with a term as stipulated, uh, on the application by the applicant, March 12th, uh, through March 24th, and the event shall be done in accordance with the city's approved festival ordinance. Uh, what this SUP does in essence is grant the authority for the applicant to submit the event festival permit, which will be routed internally, and they'll have to submit the insurance and all that good stuff, uh, meeting that ordinance standard as well. Again, the footnote, it does require a three-quarter affirmative vote, uh, based on that supplemental standard requirement. And Mayor, Council will be happy to entertain any questions.
Well, one thing we want to look at, too, Scott, there, I think every year that the city has provided some assistance or help with, uh, unloading or loading or, you know, on the beach there, so we probably might want to, in our motion to, to entertain that also. So, just FYI, Council. So it, at this time, uh, it's a public hearing, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this issue? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Council, do you have any, uh, questions or concern to the applicant is out there, or the staff? Council, Rodriguez?
You know, they've been doing this for a while, uh, you know, and.
Three years or four? Seven?
Come on, Mayor.
Holy moly.
Kelly, Kelly Clark's been doing a good job of, uh, picking up after himself and bringing in, uh, what we need here as far as tourism. Um, I would, I would think about considering maybe doing an SUP. I mean, we do it for the bed and breakfasts, you know, as they prove themselves, we extend their, you know, SUPs. And I don't know, that's something that we can do, and maybe Scott can give us some little guidance on, maybe giving them a SUP for three years, or for, or five years, but I'm not too sure where we can do that.
If I may, I'd like to respond.
Sure.
So the supplemental standard number 28 there in the zoning ordinance says that, uh, it shall not exceed 14 consecutive days, which is what he's working with, and then you have a certain amount, no more than 30 days within a calendar year. All these will be re-upped every year. One of the things that perpetuated this supplemental standard, or, uh, helped generate this supplemental standard, was, one, it's a comprehensive regulation, it applies to every property within the city, and really, the genesis of this was the old carnivals that were showing up on properties that like reunion grounds, and you have, uh, adjacency concerns. So when this was cobbled together as this outdoor entertainment use venue, it was really for the reunion grounds with the neighborhoods next door. They were also, they being some of the carnivals, were looking at some of the properties along 377 backing up to establish residential neighborhoods as well. Um, the issuance of the SUP is tied to the property, not the owner, or not the applicant. That's the issue, that's the sticking point. So hypothetically, if we give the issue, or issue the SUP to the property, say, five years, and somebody two years down the line says, I, as a properly operating outdoor entertainment venue, want to bow out, somebody else is coming in, you don't have that performance standard to look at to address those adjacency problems. So it's great, we have a wonderful applicant in this instance, but it's tied to the property, and circling back to, say, a carnival on reunion ground. And we say, and again, there's that equity issue. When we hand, hand these things out, we gotta treat everybody fair throughout the entire city. If we change this to, say, two or three years, somebody comes in after year one or year two, and that carnival operation changes, that SUP's good for three years, and it's issued to the owner and tied to the property. So HGMA, or the county, or the cattle raisers association, or whoever comes in on that property, or any other property on 377, uh, gets a new operation in, and they don't perform as the previous one does. Doesn't matter. That issues, that SUP's tied to the property. The, the, the cost of the SUP, I think, is fairly nominal. Uh, it's, it's $300. Um, it's an opportunity for somebody like Kelly Clark to get up and explain, you know, what he's bringing to the city, and help market his, uh, his operation, which is great. Um, so from a planning standpoint, because of the potential adjacency issues, um, that we've seen with some of the past, I would, I would, I think it's good to keep it at one year. We'll be happy to do whatever Council wants, if they want to change outdoor entertainment venues to, to allow for multiple terms. But the, the sticking point there is it's tied to the property, not the operator, not the owner. And there's no guarantee that you won't have adjacency problems if that term changes, or the operator changes during that term.
Well, also, Scott, I mean, along those lines, this, this is actually tied to a date, too. Unlike a, a, a bread and breakfast, uh, we've, we've had this issue with our downtown before, where somebody just assumed that they were gonna get, say, uh, the gazebo or, or spot down there, but you have to apply every year, because these dates change every year. And as we go forward out there, there's might be opportunities, that there may be another event that would cor, that would, that would be, uh, coming, you know, that would be something else that would be there, and have to, uh, work around that, where they change their date or something, because we're starting to use that beach for more and more different things. So we don't want to tie something down to, to that and say, well, nobody else can have it.
That's absolutely correct, and one of the key things about the dates is.
They change.
Reassessing the site plan, because some of these, like an outdoor entertainment venue, carnival, or whatever, it gives an opportunity for us to look at the dates, and the police chief, or whoever may want to look at the traffic patterns, or, um, I know we had one over by Toyota at one point in time, and we looked at how traffic was dispensing out in that area. We looked at the adjacency problems, uh, and we had really in-depth conversation about that.
Mr. Mayor.
Captain Mobley.
First of all, I'd like to thank Kelly for sticking with this. There were a couple of years, the weather wasn't so great, and we had rain and those type of things. So thanks for sticking with it. So if we can't do a, a multi-year SUP, maybe we make it easier and streamline the process for this, to where he doesn't have to drive in from Springtown to go to P&amp;Z and to come to council. We understand the benefit, and if it's the $300 a year, I think we're probably giving him that much in, in, uh, the city's help and setup and breakdown and those type of things. So I don't know if that's, that's the issue, or it's just a, if it's just a procedural, uh, process that we'd rather not go through. But if we can streamline that, because I think P&amp;Z, they understand the benefit, and after seven years, if, if, if they don't understand the benefit after seven years, maybe we need to look at our members. And it's the same thing with council. Well, I think we understand the benefit to the area, why do we go through this grueling process and have him drive down several times a year, just to get a thumbs up? When I think we all know, you're gonna get a thumbs up. So I would, I, I, if he can just fill out an application, submit his fee, and it walks itself through, I think that's a much better approach.
We do have, um.
Again, do this.
Again, it's up to you. Uh, so we'll process the application, we'll send it before P&amp;Z and city council. Um, we do have a failure to appear clause in our ordinance that says, okay, if there's nobody there to, to address some of the concerns P&amp;Z has, then there is latitude for that legislative body to say, we don't think that it's complete enough, you haven't addressed our questions, but if you're comfortable in the.
But I think we can communicate with them in the previous, if there's an issue in previous year, maybe there's a suggestion made, that maybe you ought to show up for this. But I, I, I have faith in our, in our council, in our P&amp;Z, that they understand what, if they see it several times and they don't hear of an issue, I don't know that the next year, there should be any pushback anyway. I mean, we see plenty of these where it's just, let's move forward, get to the next agenda item, and I think this is one of them. And I'm not arguing with you, I'm just saying, I'm, I'm trying to make it easier on the applicant.
Is there?
Well, but, but isn't it true, when it goes to P&amp;Z, they go ahead and they, they reach out to, like, the, 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 the police department and things like that, to try to find out?
Notice out, too.
They send a notice out, so they don't know that stuff until it comes through the P&amp;Z.
What I'm saying is, to have him have to show up for all of this, and I, the failure, I get the failure to appear thing, but we can give them some, some notice that, hey, we, our police chief has an issue, or there's, there's a letter coming in from a neighbor or something, that they may want to show up. But just to show up when there's no, when there's. But just to show up when there's no, when there's, I don't sense that there's any pushback in this room. And so, like I said, are you pushing back?
Yes, I am. Mayor.
Go ahead, come on, look at the podium, and introduce yourself, and.
Now you're going to withdraw this application? After all this?
There was nothing to begin with, and now we're going through it. My name's Kelly Clark, I own Shoot Two Productions. With y'all passing this, hopefully this time, this will be our seventh year to do Bulls on the Beach, and we're ever grateful to the city of Granbury. It's a great event of ours. It's one of our most attended events by the participants. They come from all over the Southwest, and hopefully fill up hotels, and it's, it's been a great event. We have had some years that it's been, I mean, we're outdoor in Texas, and the weather will get us. But just to go on record, I have no issues. The $300, again, like you said, with, with what the city helps us do, every truck I own, I've stuck on that beach out there. If it, if it gets a little rain beforehand, then we can get out there and get around, but if we can't, that rubber tire loader y'all does all the stuff that we need to do, and we really appreciate that. But I don't have issues of coming down here. I, I come in the room, and I see a full room of people, and I assume they're all mad at me for something, so we just.
We can make that happen.
Exactly, yeah, yeah. I'm pretty good at it. I do these all over the metroplex. We go as far as Greenville and, and back this way, so this is what I do for a living. And again, this is one of our best events. It's just something we do, and we'll come down, we'll come to P and Z, and we'll come to whatever it is we need to do. I appreciate you guys trying to grandfather us in, or whatever it is we're doing. I have a, a contract with the city of Hasslet, this will be our 11th year to do the city of Hasslet. What we do with them is a three-year, three-year contract. The caveat in the contract says, "As long as the Counsel approves the money for it, then it goes through that year." So I don't know if that's what you're thinking or what, but it could be a deal where, as long as you guys approve it to go through, it's through, or I, I don't know how they do it, but that's what, that's what the city of Hasslet does.
Kelly, I think at this, I mean, I can't speak for the, the Counsel, but I think we're, we're coming up, we're trying to come up with some different ideas of how to help individuals that bring in that kind of business into the city, just like, just like you do. I think this is unique, and we're just trying to navigate our way of trying to help individuals like you.
Thank you.
That bring that kind of commitment to our city. And I don't think, right now, we're just at a standstill of what we can and can't do. We just don't have all those options laid out in front of us, and we're trying.
Yep.
Trying to accommodate you the best way we can. I don't know how yet.
Okay. City managers, it's in to have a question here.
So I propose that we recommend, the staff recommends you approve this S U P, and then allow staff to meet with Tammy Dooley, our Tourism Director, and our Parks Director, and our Public Works Director, and our Police Chief, to talk about the permitting process, and, and see if there's some things we could recommend to you to make things still equitable among all applicants, but maybe make it easier for projects that are located on city property.
Right.
Okay?
And I think that's where we're going right now, just to.
Yeah. So I can bring that back to you at a later date, but there's no sense in trying to solve the world right now.
Kelly's here tonight, and he's ready for the, you know, the Counsel to make, make a motion on this, and to go forward with this year, but going forward with that, we probably are to see if we can do something that's a little more user-friendly or something.
As you can see.
Like you've done in other communities, it sounds like.
As you can see, I'm the one that filled out the application to have this. So this is city-owned property. Maybe there's a better way to do this moving forward, and we'll look into that.
Okay. We have had, for the last three years, we've had the mayor's bull loaded, and he will not get on him, so I'll just, for the record.
One year, you wanted me in the barrel.
Well, I'll still get that done.
Okay.
Thank you, Counsel.
Who's he want to bowl?
We were going to approve it.
I'd be happy to be in that barrel if I could fit. That bull will break his neck if he hits that barrel with me in it.
So Counsel, is any more, any more concerns? I think we closed the public hearing, didn't we? If we didn't, we do it now, so we're. Counsel, any more question or concerns to the applicant or the staff on this item? Well, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion then to approve the said S U P with the conditions that are laid out here.
So moved.
We have that by, who was the two guys?
I'll let you have it.
Councilman Rodriguez, we're going to give that one to you, and Counsel Person and Reiner, with a second. Do you want to put those, having the city, the city staff go ahead and look at the?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to add that to it, allowing the city staff to go ahead and look into making this a little more user-friendly. Any more discussion, Counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Looking forward, I'll try to be out of town, Kelly.
Please, please make that happen.
Thank you. Our next item is a public hearing, considering adopting order number 2011, approving the request of the city of Granbury to amend section of the city of Granbury zoning ordinance, and I'm going to call upon Scott Sobtech to give us a report on that, if you would. Please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a little housekeeping work within our zoning ordinance. We currently have a provision under 1.6 that says, "P and Z of the city of Granbury shall not approve any plat within the city limits until the area covered by the proposed plat shall have been permanently zoned." So we've always applied that to a record plat. A conceptual plat or a preliminary plat doesn't really kind of, in essence, is just a mechanism by means where we can talk about conceptually sustaining the lot, but the engineering plans aren't done yet. So what we're proposing is to change the language to, "P and Z of the city of Granbury shall not approve any record plat, i.e. final plat or replat, where we have detailed engineering drawings until such time that the zoning is in place." It just makes more sense. Long story short, is we don't want to grant entitlement to develop property, cut it up into multiple lots unless we know that we have the capacity with water and sewer and other means to sustain the development. There's a little working room here to say, "Okay, everything's fine. Conceptually, if the engineer gets up and says, 'We've got water and sewer,' we can dovetail the zoning in with the preliminary plat." But it also gives us the means in order to kind of hold up the zoning or the entitlement side until, and then say, "Go finish out your engineering, and, and we'll process this with the, with the record plat, i.e. the final plat." The other little minor change or tweak is, under this P and Z report, is we're underscoring that they need to look at the adopted facility design standards when they make recommendations on the rezoning. So make sure it's sustainable from an infrastructure standpoint as well. As part of the comprehensive plan, it's also codified in the zoning ordinance. We're just underscoring that that, that infrastructure delivery is part of their report to you. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. Chris, you got a question?
Since I was in staff meeting on Monday, do these changes make it more developer-friendly?
Yes.
Or?
Yes.
Okay. We actually asked that question.
Thank you.
We're almost, we're getting there.
We're making incremental steps.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments for the staff on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed amendments that have been presented to us.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Wadley, and a second by Councilman Mobley.
Mobley.
Wadley and Mobley.
Thank you.
Wadley. Any more discussion, Counsel? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those are approved. Next item, number 16, is a public hearing, considering adopting orders number 2012, approving the request of the city of Granbury to amend section of sections of city of Granbury zoning ordinance. Once again, I'm going to call Scott Sobtech to give us a staff report on this.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. Again, just some housekeeping work. We have some definitions of dwelling unit area and floor area, and what we're doing is, in our area requirement standards, where both of them are reflective of the same area requirements. For example, the minimum area of a dwelling. We have a chart on one side that says dwelling area, and then we have a schematic on the other side that references floor area. When you look at the detailed definition of our zoning ordinance, it alludes to the air-conditioned space of a building. Same thing, the numbers are the same, minimum square foot for each residential district. So we're taking out floor area, and we're just making sure that everybody recognizes that the dwelling unit or dwelling area is the air-conditioned space, doesn't include garage spaces or porch areas or other non-air-conditioned habitable space. So the changes will affect, as mentioned in the heading, all of those figures for reference residential areas 52C through 512C, which is all of our residential districts, single-family, R seven, R eight point four, 10, 12, et cetera. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open it up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions or concerns to staff on this item? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said amendments.
So moved.
There were amendments, right? Okay. I have that motion by Councilman Gorgon, and a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those are approved. Thank you. You know, I failed to mention earlier in the meeting here, but, you know, I want to congratulate our Councilman Greg Gorgon on his finalization of adoption of three boys. Good job, Greg. It was a couple, him and, him and Mayor, it's both pretty happy people out there, so that's a great.
It's been a long time.
Well, hang on, it's going to be a long.
You just started.
Yeah. But congratulations, Greg, you did a job well done there, so. At this, I will now declare that Granbury City Council is convened in the open session that all members are present. The city council will now go into closed session pursuant to the provision of the Texas Government Code and Court of Justice Authority contained in the following section, section 551071, outstationed with the attorney, and section 551087, deliberation regarding economic development. We will now go into executive session. Is now reconvened in the open session. There was no action taken in the executive session. Counsel, is there any more comments or items? Hearing none, I entertain, hearing none, the council meeting is now adjourned.